Tennessee Williams.
Okay.
Mr. Izaza?
Here.
Mr. Wellahan?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Callmore? Ms. Wilson?
Present. Mr. Sheen?
I'd like to make a motion to go out of order and do our student reports. And then back to the regular agenda.
Second that.
Seconded by Ms. Tennessee Williams. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So move, welcome. Mr. Morales.
Hello, my name's Edi Ventu Morales. I'm the committee rep for um, Holyoke High. Uh, I'm in 10th grade. Uh, my day is going great, thank you for asking. And I have a, I have a few bullet points to go over. Um, you're gonna see a common theme that goes on. It's uh, the overarching theme about the school year. It's community. Community is something that is very important to us this school year, and we wanna represent it well. That starts off with reach. Does anyone know what reach block is? Are you familiar with it? So, the whole point of reach box is, we meet every Wednesday for about thirty to forty minutes, and the whole theme is re- uh, whole theme is community. And that's what we go over. So our first, our first kinda like, almost like, project that we did was tug of war. Each class would be in groups of ten, so you would have teams and you have to work together. Tug of war is very work-together like kinda game. So it was ninth graders with ninth graders, 10th graders with 10th graders, so on. The 12th graders ended up winning overall with the grades, and then we had a teachers versus students tug of war match where the teachers end up winning. We had another, the following week, we had a you had to get like tinfoil. Every class had tinfoil. And you had to make the best night, and also had to write down the best values and what you think a Holyoke High night is. It was really fun. We had many winners, and everyone put in a bunch of effort. Even teams that didn't win, you could tell they tried their hardest during the event. The next thing that we did is the Student Ambassador Program. It is a group that meets every reach block, and they discuss things in the school. They came up with the Fun Friday idea, and it's like an idea where they just like, they do something every Friday for the students, and it just makes everyone feel better. Alright, my next bullet point is the grade level assem- uh, assemblies. We talked about building school community this year, and obviously that's all, you're gonna hear it a bunch during this speech. Just community, community, community. That's our whole, our whole plan. We wanna make sure everyone feels welcome in our school, and everyone feels great. Assembly program during the, uh, sorry. Alright, we talked about the expectations for the school year and how we want everyone to be. We started using the smart passes, and they're working really well. Now, teachers don't have to really do it themselves. There's a computer in the front of their room where people are able to um, come in and, and just put in their names, so they're able to use the bathroom without disrupting the class, and the class just flows perfectly and well. The hallways have been clearing up, and it looks amazing, so there's not like, normally last year you would see four or five students in the halls, now you just see one student walk into the bathroom, walking back. You would see one person walk in the bathroom, walking back, and the halls are clear. Everyone's passes are, are getting done on time. You're not really seeing a bunch of red passes anymore. And everyone's just being in the right place. Everyone's staying in class more, everyone's staying more proactive and, and staying in their room, trying to get their work done, and everyone's been super well this year. Another thing is the C.T. River um, Conservation, where we're sending students over and we're cleaning the Connecticut River. About, it's like a few miles, I think. Uh, four hundred and ten mile Connecticut River. Water across the United States to make the river safer to drink and safer to use. Now, we did kick off the fall sports with a hundred and seventy athletes spanning around a few sports. Many of our teams already winning their games and working together to do their best. And I think that should be everything, but really what you should take from this is that everything we're doing is we're doing it as a team and as a community. And that's what we wanna focus on this school year, and what we're gonna continue to focus on for the time being. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And great job on your first one.
I know.
Ms. Wilson?
So I have a question about this tug of war. I'm trying to picture it. Is, is it, were there certain representatives um, for each class, or how did that work?
So, during our lunch period, we had a sign up where anybody could sign up, and it was ten from each grade. And anyone could join. And so i- it just like, it was always like random people, so you didn't really know anyone. That's why it was a really good exercise to help build community and try and like, tug of war is a very team game. You, if one person's not working, the team is gonna fall apart, so you had to, you had to communicate with everybody and make sure everything was flowing correctly.
Thank you. Ms. Tennessee Williams?
Young man, what is the name of your group again?
Wh- what?
You guys have a group. What is the name of it? Not tug of war.
Yeah, um, you're talking about the Student Ambassadors?
Yes.
It is called, I'm sorry. I'm looking. The Student Ambassador Program, that's what it's called.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have our Dean Campus Room representative. Ms. Vega, welcome.
Okay, so. My name is Jorisad Vega. I'm in the 11th grade, and I attend Deetech. I'm in Health Assisting. Um, to start, we have a vocational shop shout-out, and that's, that goes to our Deetech Culinary, which will begin our second consecutive year working with the White Hut Restaurant at the Biggie this Friday. 11th and 12th grade students alike co-op, you know. They will start, um, they will start with that, and they will be provided onsite instruction by their instructor, and these juniors and seniors will gain valuable work-based learning experiences that have potential to turn into co-ops. So, for learning, but this is also an opportunity for them to get a job. We thank Bean Restaurant Group for their continued partnership. Our attendance, um, on average for these two weeks was ninety-three point six, but a special shout-out to the seniors, because they had a attendance of ninety-five point five percent. This year's Student Council held their first meeting this afternoon. I attended. And it was well-attended as well. Besides supporting our face coordinator with Fun Fridays, they have begun their Fall Food Donation Service Project. We look forward to all they plan to do this year.
Thank you so much. Ms. Wilson? Do you know more about the Fall Food? And wanna share that with us?
Yes, um, so the Student Council, they did this last year as well. Um, they asked around, and they also made a list of what people might have needed for Thanksgiving. It's a Thanksgiving thing. It happens in November. And we emailed people, we emailed these, I emailed the superintendent last year. Um, we email whoever we can, so that they can help donate food or money, or whatever they can, so that they can feed families who are in need.
So if someone who might be watching this at home, or people here, if they wanna uh, donate, how does that happen?
Um, you can reach out to the head of the Student Council, which is, um, Ms. Lulu. Uh, I have her email somewhere with me. Yeah, we can reach, you can reach out, let you, let us know whatever you wanna donate, or whatever you can do. And if you don't know what to donate, we have things that we can offer for you to donate as well.
Thank you so much, and great job. Right, we don't have students showcase today. Great round of applause for both our student reps on their first one of the year. And thank you for giving your time to being here and representing your schools. We don't have students showcase today. Then next up, we have public comment, and I have a list. I will call your name. Please state your name and address. And then you'll have two minutes to speak. First person on the list, John Roach.
My name is John Roach, 2 Laurel Drive, East Hampton, Mass. Good evening, members of the Hoyoke School Committee. Mayor Garcia, interim Superintendent Soto, citizens of Hoyoke, here tonight, or those watching from home. Again, my name is John Roach. I am the History Department Chair at Hoyoke High, where I teach American Government and AP US History. And I serve as co-chair of the Hoyoke Teachers Association's bargaining team. I have taught in Hoyoke for twenty-three years. Before receivership, during receivership, and now as decision-making returns to the people of Hoyoke. At our first bargaining session last year, I said, "The HTA is pleased to work side-by-side with the Hoyoke School Committee on a fair contract." "We are excited that decisions about our schools are once again being made by the people of Hoyoke." I stand by that statement today, and the HTA bargaining team stands by that statement. When my students walk into class, I ask them to take a deep breath. And I ask them to work with me to be productive during that day's lesson. Tonight, I ask the same of us, the leaders of the Hoyoke Public Schools. Let's work together. I also want to acknowledge School Committee Member Sheen. At our last bargaining session, when our team raised questions about licensure and the MTL, you listened, and you said, "We are willing to hear the HTA's concerns. We will look to provide an equitable agreement." We, the HTA, agree. We are not at an impasse. We want to bargain. We want to listen. And we want to reach an agreement that supports both the teachers and the students of the city of Hoyoke. That means bargaining on what an equitable school calendar looks like, bargaining on what an equitable teacher's salary scale looks like, bargaining on what an equitable professional development looks like, and much more. The HTA bargaining team is committed to these conversations. We want a contract that keeps teachers in Hoyoke, supports our students, and builds a strong lasting partnership between the School Committee and the Hoyoke Teachers Association. We have a letter that has been signed by ninety-five percent of our HTA members. And this letter is all about continuing the bargaining. Again, I thank you for your time, and I ask, let's do this together. Let's bargain. Thank you.
Next, we have Katie Bolick?
Yes. Thank you. Hi, I'm Katie Bolick, and I have been-
Name and address, please.
Sorry, I'm Katie Bolick, 285 Brainerd Street, South Hadley. And I've been teaching here in Hoyoke for uh, since 2016. And this is my fifth year um, with HPS. And while my address might be in South Hadley, my heart is here in Hoyoke with all of us here in this room today. Um, I have started my fifth year at New Peck, and I'm very excited with this brand-new building and all of the opportunities that it holds. As many of you know, I am also co-chair with John on the HTA bargaining team. And I have been at the center of this negotiation work with my team. I wanted to be a part of this team to help drive meaningful conversation and change in Hoyoke to ensure educators' voices, many of whom were quieted for the last decade, are represented at this bargaining table. The return to local control is a unique and historic opportunity for our district. Few communi- communities have this chance to reshape their schools in this way, and it is essential that we approach it with collaboration and with trust. That is why it is concerning that at the first sign of difficulty, HPS has turned to outside council rather than working directly with us. I wanna be clear, the HTA and HPS are not at impasse. On August 28th, when Mr. Connolly, the HPS attorney, asked if we were at impasse, our team answered, "No." When asked about next steps, we stated that we needed more time to meet as a team and would follow up. At no point did HTA suggest or imply that we are at impasse and would not return to the table. Declining a proposal presented as all or nothing did not end negotiations. It simply indicated that we could not move forward with the package as presented, and that we needed time to meet as a team to determine our next steps. Our goal is straightforward, to bargain with our local school community com- hmm, school committee and its representatives, and to create a contract that respects the expertise, commitment, and loyalty of Hoyoke teachers. We want to move beyond the status quo and build a district defined by stability and opportunity for our students to thrive in. We have provided our availability, oh my goodness, our availability to HPS over the following few months, and we look forward to working together with you guys. Thank you.
Next, we have Nick Cream. Name and address, please.
Uh, hello, my name is Nick Cream. I live at 7 Warner Street in South Hadley. I'm an Ethnic Studies teacher at Deetech and president of the HTA. I wanna start by assuring you all, as the person named in interim Superintendent Soto's email to all of our members, that contrary to what Mr. Soto has shared, we stand ready to bargain with the School Committee's chosen bargaining team. We appreciate the fact that Dr. Rivera Cologne and Mr. Sheen were at the bargaining table last session as well. Ms. Wilson was in attendance as well. We appreciate, and um, what happened at the bargaining table is simple. We rejected the HPS proposal, and told your bargaining team we would get back to them when we had a clearer idea of our next steps. Over one hundred of our members who were in attendance can corroborate this. We find it insulting and disrespectful that the attorney representing Hoyoke Public Schools has filed for the state to intervene with our bargaining process. This is not local control. No one on our bargaining team ever said anything about not wanting to bargain. The only thing we did was reject a truly, truly disrespectful proposal from the HPS team. If we had accepted this proposal, it would have been an insult to all of the hundreds of our members who have taken part in building our bargaining platform. If we had accepted this proposal, it would have erased over a year of meaningful dialogue with parents, teachers, counselors, paraprofessionals, instructional coaches, education team leads, and others who we have spoken with and received feedback from. If we had accepted this proposal, we would continue losing teachers at the rate we have been losing them, with those numbers most likely going up. Our ask of you all is simple. To keep your word and do what is best for the young people of Hoyoke. You can do both of these things. By telling your representatives to come back to the table and talk with us as equals and as partners, rather than as subordinates who you can push around and demean. We blocked off every Thursday as a bargaining team from now until December, and will be ready to meet on any of these dates. Thank you.
Next, we have Ashley Howland?
Hello, my name is Ashley Howland, and I live at 59 Longfellow Road here in Hoyoke. I currently work as a Special Education Team Lead at Sullivan, and prior to that, I worked as a Special Education Inclusion Teacher. Over the course of these last months, I have attended each session where the Hoyoke Teachers Association and the district have bargained for their new contract as a silent representative. I have watched as our bargaining team has presented proposal after proposal aimed at addressing the safety of our schools, the quality of our students' education, and the hiring and retaining of teachers here in Hoyoke. I have watched each time as the district provided little to no immediate feedback, instead agreeing to look over the proposals and provide responses at a later time. And I have watched as the bargaining team has allowed that the specific language of the proposed contract would take time to respond to. On August 28th, I was excited to once again return to the bargaining table to see what responses the district had and what they might propose. Like many of the teachers in the room that day, when we met in caucus, I did not believe we could re- that we could reasonably accept that package proposal that was presented to us by the School Committee at that time. I did not believe that it fully addressed our concerns around our Hoyoke students' education, our ability um, to retain teachers here in Hoyoke, or the safety concerns in our school buildings. On August 28th, I heard the HTA's bargaining team say that they rejected the version um, of the contract that had been presented. But I also heard them say that they only rejected that package proposal. I heard them say that they would review the specific language of the document they had been given, and that they would get back to the School Committee once they had time to meet, um, sorry, once they had had the opportunity to do so and meet as a team. This asks for no more than the same consideration that the School Committee and the district were provided as the HTA made their proposals. Then I heard the lawyer for the School Committee suggest that negotiations were at an impasse. And I heard the ITCH's bargaining team deny that suggestion. We are not at an impasse. As a Hoyoke teacher, I am still excited to bargain for our contract. Um, and I am excited for the back-and-forth discussion that makes up a negotiation. As I have talked uh, to other teachers in this last week, every teacher I have spoken to has said the same thing. They want to bargain. I want to bargain. We as teachers in the district want to bargain, and we are excited to do so with the School Committee. I know our bargaining team has reached out to you. I know they have sent potential bargaining dates, so I implore you to take this time to think about why you have chosen not to respond to that message, to think about why you have chosen not to consider, continue to sit down and bargain with us, and to think about if this best serves the children of Hoyoke. And I implore you to make a better choice.
Madam Chair, point of order.
Ms. Wilson?
Um, when your bell goes off, what does that signify?
That the time is up.
Thank you.
Will do. Thank you. Brandy Belachico?
Hi, my name is Brandy Belachico. I've been here enough times that you can pronounce my last name now. I live at 10 Smith Street in South Hadley.
I practice.
You nailed it. Um, I've repeatedly been here to a forum that by definition is not a conversation, and I've asked you to come and have a conversation. On August 28th, your council presented a package proposal that we rejected because it would be detrimental to Hoyoke students and educators. Instead of trusting our lived experience and urgent priorities, your attorney, Dave Connolly, filed a petition for mediation. This is not continuing a conversation. It is purposefully ignoring the call to do what's right by your school system. It is ending a conversation before it even starts.
Mr. Sheen?
Yeah, I just um, wanna make one clarification just for the benefit of others. I know that um, Dr. Rivera Cologne and I were at bargaining the other day, and just so everyone knows out in the public and everywhere, that it wasn't a reason for others not being there, that they didn't wanna go, that we were the elected and chosen members of the School Committee. I just want people in the viewing audience to know that it's not, they didn't chose, choose not to go, but we were the chosen representatives. So just so that's known for everyone that it's, we were there representing um, the committee. I know everyone probably knows that here, but just so people know, no one was derelict on duties at all or anything.
Thank you. Next, Jacob Bilskey? Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Jacob Bilskey. I live at 142 Nassau Drive in Springfield. This is my second year teaching Ethnic Studies and Civics here in Hoyoke. Um, our bargaining unit is united around our wish to negotiate with you, the elected representatives of Hoyoke, for a contract that retains teachers and guarantees that your kids are being educated by experts that know the community. One hundred percent of HTA's bargaining unit at Peck, the new Peck, signed onto our petition to rescind the mediation filing. It was one of the easiest asks I have made of our members in my time as a building action team organizer with the HTA. The status quo of twenty to thirties percent turnover at HPS is failing our kids and failing Hoyoke. I'm reminded of a conversation that I had with one of my eighth graders last year. She had just taken a career aptitude test in STEM class and was excited to report to me that one of her options was social, to be a social studies teacher. When I congratulated her and said that Hoyoke could use teachers that grew up here and knew the town, she laughed. Her plans were very clear, to get out of Dodge as she, as soon as she graduated. To be blunt, students can tell that their teachers are uncertain about their futures in Hoyoke. As a second-year teacher, I'm constantly disheartened that when I speak to teachers that have been in this district since before receivership, they tell me to get out while I'm still young, and they regret staying so long because the district has let them down time and again. I like Hoyoke. It reminds me of my hometown, Bedford, Maine. Uh, during my lunch break, I order from local restaurants. On my way home, I run my errands at the mall. When I want to spend a night on the town, I skip the MGM and invite my Springfield friends up to Hoyoke. If I were confident in a good contract, I would even move here and send my future kids to school here. A good contract means schools that make kids proud of their city, that make them want to teach here, rather than staying just because they don't have a choice. You, the School Committee, you, the School Committee, do have a choice. You can either maintain the status quo that is not viable through mediation, or invest in your children, economy, and future by investing in your educators. As a civics teacher, I hope you make the democratic choice and choose to bargain with your employees and constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Bob Williams?
Hello, my name is Robert Williams. I live at 8 Maple Street in South Hadley. Um, I am a world history teacher. I teach 11th and 12th grade at Hoyoke High School, North Campus. I'm here today with colleagues to inform the School Committee that the charge that HTA is unwilling to bargain, or that negotiations are an impasse, is ridiculous, absurd, and false. We have been told repeatedly by members of this committee, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education before them, and its representatives, that they wanna work in consultation and collaboratively with us. The actions of your representatives have demonstrated the opposite, whether your intention or not. Our bargaining team has broken their backs to develop cost-effective and sustainable proposals that would ensure, number one, better working and learning conditions in our schools. Number two, a pathway to bring Hoyoke out of the mire of receivership that we have suffered for the last ten years. And three, a viable means to staunch the bleeding of a thirty percent staff turnover rate, which we have suffered every year on average for the past ten years. You have a choice before you, and it's a very simple binary choice. Come to the table and actually bring viable proposals that seek to work with us and build off of the work that we have already done, or sit unmoving, stuck in receivership, stuck in mediation. Few moments in life provide us with such clarity. So I entreat upon you to grab opportunity by the forelock. We have continued to sit at the table with a willingness to cooperate and show respect. We are not willing to be bullied and disrespected by paid representatives. We will not sacrifice our students and our colleagues' futures for anyone. They sit in front of us and beside us every day, and we will fight for them. We are ready to continue to bargain in good faith. That is why we are here, and here is where we will remain until we are heard and worked with. Thank you.
Next, Maria Perez?
Hi, my name is Maria Perez. I teach dual language at Kelly's, oh, Maria Perez, 195 Farnham Drive, Hoyoke, Mass. Um, I'm Maria Perez. I teach dual language at Kelly's School. I serve on the HTA bargaining team. So on behalf of the bargaining teams, the silent reps, and all of the educators across the district, we are respectfully urging you to reconsider your decision to declare an impasse and file for mediation in our negotiations. We do not believe that we have reached a true impasse. We remain committed to the bargaining process and are fully prepared to continue meaningful negotiations. Our refusal to accept the current offer should not be interpreted as a refusal to negotiate. Rather, it reflects our deep commitment to securing a fair and sustainable contract. One that supports the retention of qualified educators, and most importantly, meets the diverse needs of our students. We are not walking away from the table. We are asking to stay at the table, to work collaboratively, toward a resolution that reflects the shared values and priorities of the district. That is why the bargaining team has offered every Thursday between now and December to bargain. We are ready to do the hard work of negotiating, are you? Thank you.
Next, we have Alex Cespedes.
Hi, I'm Alex Cespedes. I use they/them pronouns, and I live on 13 Fail Avenue. Could I kindly ask folks to, like I do in my classroom, put your Chromebooks or laptops forty-five degrees and track me as I'm speaking? Thank you. Alright, on August 29th, the HTA was notified by your lawyer, Dave Connolly, about a DLR petition for mediation on your behalf. We do not need any more interference from the state here in Hoyoke Public Schools. The decision moves us further from local control, not closer to it. As many of my colleagues have already stated, the union remains ready to bargain. We've waited seven months to even see the elected School Committee members at the bargaining table. It is disappointing that you've misconstrued rejecting the package proposal as a failure or refusal to bargain. Myself, the HTA bargaining team, and over one hundred silent representatives reviewed the content of this proposal. It was truly a continuation of aspects of receivership that has led to the loss of many great educators in this city. We fundamentally could not accept an all-or-nothing proposal that falls far below what Hoyoke educators, students, and families need. We intend to continue bargaining in good faith with you all. And we remain committed to negotiating a contract that reflects the priorities of our students, their families, and five-hundred-plus unit members. This includes fair compensation that addresses the equities created by receivership, a culture of respect, sure decision-making, and educator autonomy, a school day and year in line with our surrounding communities, modern and humane parental leave for our staff, equitable caseload ratios and class cap sizes, and a district-wide oversight committee on health and safety to keep educators and students safe in our schools. We work tirelessly to support Hoyoke students. We've called on each of you over and over again, not merely to hear us, but to treat us as professionals and equals to negotiate a fair contract. Show that you care and are willing. Don't let the state continue to intervene. Come back to the table and bargain. And we're also delivering a petition, ninety-five percent of our unit. signed this petition, and we're dropping off a letter stating we are not at impasse. Thank you.
That is the end of our public comment. Moving forward, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera Cologne. Um, so two items on the superintendent's report. Uh, one of them, um, in, you know, we're going through every single school committee policy and creating a district action plan um, to make sure that, you know, uh, the, the district is in line with all of the policies. And one of the policies that we came across is uh, policy CE, which states that the superintendent may establish such permanent or temporary councils, cabinets, and committees as he, she deems necessary for assuring staff participation and decision-making, for implementing policies and regulations, and for the improvement of the educational program. The membership, composition, and responsibilities of admin councils, cabinets, and committees will be defined by the superintendent and may be changed at his or her discretion. However, the school committee wishes to be kept informed of the establishment of and dissolution of these groups, as well as their membership and their purpose. So you can see in your packet that I have included a draft of uh, what we are thinking for um, uh, committees, councils, and work groups. Uh, one of them has, you know, we have had in place for a while, which is the teacher advisory group. We recently uh, surveyed uh, all the former teacher advisors that were a part of the teacher advisory group to just get some feedback on the process and, you know, how often we should be meeting, and we, we hope to get that group up and running. Um, in the past, you know, when we had rezoning, they, they were very instrumental in providing, you know, uh, input. Um, oftentimes, whenever we have a topic that we're going to be discussing, uh, each of the members of, of TAG end up reaching out to their colleagues in their buildings and getting feedback from them and reporting that back out to uh, the teacher advisory group. In the past, we had met once a month, um, but we're, we're soliciting feedback from, from uh, former members to see if that's, you know, if that's the right frequency. So um, we plan on still continuing to have that group, um, and the frequency uh, will be TBD. We have the parent advisor, the district parent advisory council, uh, that usually meets on a monthly basis. Um, and um, Stephen Mogell usually is the one helping facilitate that along with Stephanie Garcia, and uh, apparently that had been identified. Um, and most of the time, those meetings are uh, are, are remote. We do have a student cabinet slash student advisory council. Um, in the past, we would meet online, and last year, we started meeting in person here at Dean, which has been great. Um, the culinary department uh, prepared a meal so that when we're bringing um, topics to the student advisory council, we usually mix up middle school and high school students together so that they can sit with each other and talk to each other and talk about what high school is like to some of the middle schoolers, and um, the in-person here at Dean has, has been working out really well, and I look forward to continuing with the student advisory council. This year, uh, we want to put uh, a competency determination work group that, and it, it's already met. Um, as you are aware, the last meeting, um, we have to put, uh, we're targeting a deadline of October 31st to create um, a draft of the competency determination policy that we have to submit to the state. I know we, we don't have to submit it to the state until December 31st, but we're shooting to get all of that work done by October 31st. Um, and Rebecca Thompson, our executive director of academics, is leading that group. She's already met with uh, many of our high school teachers and counselors and administrators to uh, design. I had an opportunity to review some of what was put together, and I know that this is going to be talked about at um, our September 29th leadership and accountability meeting. We also want to put together an HPS uh, grading policy group, um, also led by uh, Rebecca Thompson. We have the district literacy leadership team, DILT, and PRISM team, um, that is going to be meeting monthly starting in September and engaging in action planning and execution of our PRISM grant work um, in support of early literacy. We want to put a music programming work group together to create alignment and equity and access in HPS music programming, vertically and horizontally, to ensure enriching musical experiences that build skill and a love for music. And that is also something that um, our H, uh, Rebecca's working with our HPS music department head. Um, this one is tentative, um, but we definitely want to get it, get it going. We have, uh, we're looking to put together an artificial intelligence, artificial intelligence policy working group uh, to develop guidance for the use of AI for both staff and students. Um, Rebecca is going to be leading that, and uh, she's getting support uh, from another member of our team, uh, Erin Linville, to just get this going and research best practice and research other policies. And uh, we have had the transportation task force, as many of you are aware. Um, I think transportation costs are a point of contention in the budget with city, uh, with city council specifically, because of the rising costs. And um, the fact that those costs are outside of net school spending and, and really fall on the city to fund. So uh, whenever we, you know, we have had this task force for several years, but whenever an issue comes up and we want to look into it, that, that committee um, gets together and usually meets a few times a year just to provide some recommendations on how to be more efficient in uh, transportation. And then there's, uh, the other three are just district man, uh, district mandated ones. Uh, the LPAC, um, English Learn, English Learners Parent Advisory Council, the CPAC, Special Education Parent Advisory Council, and the Career Technical Education Advisory Council. So that was that uh, part of the agenda, and then the other part of my report was just a, a quick update. I'm back to, oh.
Ms. Wilson.
So you used a couple acronyms during that? Um, PRISM, this PRISM team, what is the PRISM team? Who is on that?
PRISM is, PRISM is a grant that we got from the state. Um, and that grant, initially, we got some startup funding, but ultimately, what they're gonna, what that group is going to be doing is taking a look at early literacy and helping us design a literacy plan for the next three to five years.
Thank you. Mr. Wellhead.
Real quick, thank you. Thank you for the list. Um, some of the task forces, they kind of, they're, they're tentative. Sometimes they're, um, they come and go, maybe each year, if you could provide the committee with a, with a list of each task force. Does it kind of keep us updated? You know, some of them might go away, and then maybe um, the names of the, of the, uh, the teachers or the principals that are, there are on them. Those might change each year or two, depending on their, their, their service. That'd be great.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for that.
And that's what today was about, is just providing a list of what we're thinking for this year. And the policy does state that uh, you know, if, if we were ever to dissolve one of these task forces or anything like that, that, you know, the, the school committee wants to be kept abreast. So I will make sure that we incorporate that into our um, just daily operations. So if we're, we're, if we're done with a task force and, you know, normally what happens is the, you know, a, a written report, you know, here's what we heard, here's a recommendation. Um, but if we're eliminating one of those uh, work groups, we, you know, I plan on bringing that back to the committee to make you aware.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Ms. Wilson.
I, I don't think this uh, policy has come before you yet, but there is a recommendation um, that each school have a student uh, group um, working and speaking on behalf of their school with their principal. So I just wanted to let you know that that's possibly coming down the pike. Student advisory group for each school. So I just want to let you know.
Principals, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, and I just wanted to provide a quick update on the start of the school year. I'm, I'm going to ask Jackie to come up as well for a portion of this. Um, essentially, basically, we had a, a really strong start, the, you know, the last couple of weeks. Um, starting the school year is, is usually, so much work goes into planning and then, you know, operationally getting our, our facilities ready. We had a ton of projects that we were doing. Um, we had a brand-new school that we were building, so I, I really want to shout out the, you know, the, the facilities team and all the work and everybody involved with launching that team and the, and the PEC crew specifically, they did a lot of work um, in making sure that that building was ready. Um, you know, this year, we, we've had, you know, a really strong start. I think every year we, you know, one of the things that our team does is uh, maybe a few weeks to a month, right after the first day of school, we get together and we start talking about like, what are those issues that we came up, you know, that, that kind of prevented, uh, you know, prevented us from having a stronger start. Like, we ask each department head to go and like, keep that in mind and document, like, what are those issues that we can do better next year? Um, and we plan on doing that again uh, next week. Uh, but you know, we did, th- this was one of the strongest starts that we've had. Um, the biggest, on the operational side, the biggest issue that we had was we're implementing a brand-new student information system. So we're moving away from School Brains and moving to Power School. And uh, our student information system feeds so many, so many of the systems that allow teachers to teach and students to learn. You know, there's so many apps that are linked to that. Um, all of our contact, uh, contact information is in there. We do attendance there, our referral system is there, so um, we had a key member of that group um, resign, you know, a, a few weeks before school started, and, and that person was, you know, bearing, bearing a lot of the workload on making sure that this implementation was strong. So uh, the rest of the team, which is a team of two, um, along with, you know, our counselors and our front office staff, had to really pick up and, and, you know, um, it was a little rocky. Um, you know, I'm not going to sugarcoat it. It was definitely uh, hard. You know, we wanted to work really hard to make sure that when kids got there on the first day, that they had the uh, the materials that they needed and the apps that they needed, and there were some complications there, but the team has been working really hard to make sure um, that those things are mapped over and everything's working. So we, we're in a good place right now. We were, the, the last hiccup that we ran into was the iPads weren't working with some of our assessments, and it was because of the older generation of iPads, um, you know, just, just don't work. You got to use a newer generation, but the team continues to work hard. Um, when you do an implementation, implementation that big of a system, it, it, you know, it's gonna, there's some growing pains, but we strongly believe that this system is a, a far better system than School Brains, and that once we're past this implementation phase, it's going to be, you know, beneficial to the district.
Ms. Wilson.
Since this is a significant shift, and you're talking about all these applications, what type of training was provided to teachers, paraeducators, anyone who would need to be able to access that information?
Yeah, so we had some, you know, we had some, some training was drop-in and, you know, provide the training by Jenny Malave, and some, we created how-tos and tutorials on how to uh, do different things. Um, I think that that was probably one of the things that, you know, um, so the, the team that we had in place, that, you know, the person that we had that was actually working on all the technical aspects of it was going to be doing that, and then the other two individuals were, was going to provide like, in-person training during those PD weeks. We had to pivot because we needed those people to actually do the technical pieces so that day one, when a kid sits down and uh, is ready to learn, they had access to all the tools, and when the teacher needed um, all of the, the applications that they need to teach, that they had those in front of them. So we had to pivot and, and create some how-tos, but we still plan on providing more in uh, more opportunities for in-person training from our data team.
So um, I, to be honest with you, um, I find it disheartening that um, educators have to fight their way probably through a new system trying to understand it. Um, and that there should have been um, a backup training plan um, for those uh, professional learning days, because that would have been the ideal time in order to have this, so our educators are prepared to show their students how to use this. So I, I am a little disappointed.
Yeah, as am I. You know, this wasn't something that was planned or in our control. We had a, a person leave suddenly, like, the day of, and we had to pivot. Um, but point taken, and that's not how we would deliver professional learning around a system like this. Um, had that not happened, we would have, uh, the professional learning would have been a little different.
Mr. Sheen.
So what supports have been set up now, like, building by building for this? Because obviously, there's going to be concerns, like what, I mean, so we understand that there was concerns with implementation, and we're probably still even in implementation, and I know that you had mentioned there were concerns with accurate phone numbers and all sorts of different things with it. So now, what is the day-to-day support? Have we built up, like, subject matter experts for schools that we're using as, like, um, to assist, like, what is the day-to-day? If I have a problem, what do I do? And how am I going to be supported for, like, and grades are going in, we're going to be, I mean, granted, I know we've only been in school for two weeks, but it's going to be the end of the first marking period before we know it, so.
Yeah, our plan is to uh, you know, our data team, um, right now, it's two, it's Jenny Malave, uh, who's leading it. Um, when we get to a point where uh, there are, you know, if there's a, if, if grading is coming up as an example, like, you know, uh, we will be providing opportunities to uh, drop in and provide, you know, some, some training. But I think the, the biggest issue right now is if there are any questions that people have that are preventing them from being able to interact with that system, that they uh, email our uh, data team. We have an email that has gone out to um, all of our principals, and one of the things that I'm having Jenny do is provide regular updates on, here's the last update where we were and what some of the issues are, and here's what we're working on, and then moving on, um, and, you know, providing a regular update. So the last update that we had went out uh, last Friday, and we're going to continue to do that, but if anybody's receiving, uh, if, if anybody's having any issues with anything, there's, you know, that we ask them to reach out to the data team. Um, we did, part, before we implemented Power School, we had a, you know, a couple of our counselors go to the Power School training specifically around developing schedules, because that's where schedules are built out. So they did, you know, there is per se an expert um, that has supported, you know, implementing the schedule at the high school. And then um, Jenny has met with each of the DMOs and people, uh, different people at the school to provide them with, with training. So like, you know, our front office staff, they take attendance in there. You know, there was a training held on how to do that.
Mr. Sheen.
So I would just encourage, and, and I understand that there was lots in data team. I will also say that a lift like this, especially having been through things like this in previous employment, is not easy. Um, but, and I would also say that the people who are probably highly effective on data teams maybe aren't the best facilitators either for new trainings. And that's nothing against the people that we have, I just mean in general. I've worked with a lot of people who are data team people that are not facilitators. Like, we all find our path and calling of what we're good at, and I would be a complete failure working on a data team, um, or in a data department. But if we can build some capacity, and it would even possibly be with either central office staff and stationed people in schools for a period of time, because it's not fair to, I mean, I understand that clerks go through the trainings, and principals go through the trainings, and the deans go through the trainings and others, but like, teachers may need help if they knew that every Tuesday, there's going to be someone just sitting here in the library or in a teacher's room or somewhere from um, ten to two, that they could stop in and just, hey, I have these questions. It might, you come up with some of those problems, and if you try calling someone, you can't get a hold of them, but knowing that there's going to be someone stationed once a week i- in each building or something, it might just help some of that. And it's, some of the problems could be navigating the system. problems could be navigating the system, but some of it could also be the fear of the unknown, and I think that we deal a lot with that, with things, and even supports for parents that we're trying to navigate through it. And I know that parents had some concerns and just learning the, the new mechanisms. And I just think if we can, if we can just put someone there. I mean, it's, you would go and talk to someone before you maybe would call on the phone or something, and it would just build support, and maybe we look at in the future, like, building some, uh, building a subject matter expert on these. It might be a teacher that's willing to take on, um, additional compensation, additional responsibilities. Like, I'm not saying a volunteer, but just someone that could help with other teachers. I just, th- these tech things can be very challenging, and this isn't gonna be solved in a year. Like, let's just own that. Like, it's, for a teacher to be fully comfortable with it, it's gonna take a couple of years to get the full functionality of these programs, and um, I will say, I've worked with multiple student record programs. I think once we get through the growing pains of Power School, I believe it will be a better program for our district and for our students and for our teachers. Like, I've, I've seen it be very successful. It's just getting there and getting from point A to B.
Ms. Vega.
Um, did any of the training that you guys had prior to starting school have to do with teaching students themselves how to get into the Power School? Because I know that that was a problem school-wide from freshmen to seniors. I didn't know how to get in, and I still haven't gotten into it, and say, somebody wants to check their grades, they're not able to because they don't know how, and the only advice I've been given is to contact support, but I don't know how to do that either.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that we're at a place right now where, where we definitely can do exact, that was the initial plan, Mr. Sheen, um, was to have, uh, somebody to, both people positioned at, during PD week, um, and, you know, provide that training. And I'm hearing now that we, you know, we could, we, we need to do a better job with, uh, educating some of the students on how to access that, so. Um, now that we have state reporting done, which we submitted, uh, last week, we had to get an extension to the deadline because of this, you know, this staffing challenge that we faced. And the, the huge part of the implementation was basically making sure that all these applications were working and people had accesses over. We can, you know, d- we can divert the team's focus on, on better, higher-quality training and making sure that we, we, um, we provide those opportunities.
Mr. Sheen.
So, if a student has challenges with it, are they calling the same and reaching out to the same support as an educator, and how are they doing that during the day?
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna have to get back to you on the student piece. This is the first I'm hearing that students were having a issues accessing it. I know we had issues with new enrollments, but I, I would, I wasn't aware that we had issues with um, all students. So I'm gonna go back to the team and, and figure out what that issue is about, and.
And it's not even just like, I, I mean, it's not just having trouble accessing, it's just the complete non-using it. I mean, that's, uh, it's, so that's, is, we've, and, I mean, I've, eh, people who have been here for a while have known that grading and putting grades in student information thing has been my biggest pet peeve for the past sixteen years. Um, that we had these tools that some teachers were using, some weren't, but now we have students that can't even access grades and see in real time, and now we have educators who are now putting everything in, and it's, there's just a complete disconnect. And we can't have, I mean, first of all, we don't want students using their cell phones during the workday, or during the school day. So, workday, I mean, whatever, it's, so, whatever mechanism, whether it's a ticketing system or whatever it is, I, I don't know if if that's gonna support that, and that's more reason why we just need someone, people in buildings, and it might be building capacity out with your staff at central office and saying, okay, you're not gonna be doing this for a few days, you're gonna be sitting here and helping this stuff, but like, every student, where the expectation is for students to be able to enter it, whatever grade level we're expecting that at, we need a hundred percent, we need, eh, eh, whether it's taking a few minutes out of the day and saying like, are you able to log into this and help someone through it? Like, we need a hundred percent of students to access it. I know we can pull. At least every high school student needs to be able to know how to, to access that. We're giving them the tools.
I will add that, at this point, there are some lessons to be learned.
Oh, yeah.
Right? This was a huge overhaul put on the shoulders of a single person. That's not a good plan, because when a person can't do something, then nobody's there to be able to fulfill that. So that's important. So there's some lessons here. We didn't step with the right foot on this. We need to be able to all work together to fix it. But there has to be an actual plan that includes people in buildings, that includes every person who has to access the system to have one, a person they can contact if they have issues, and also a way for tracking and making sure that everybody has access and that they can do it appropriately. So that way, we can move forward and continue with this, cuz I do agree with Mr. Sheen. This is a very powerful system that we can use. But at this point, if we can't get access to it, if we can't use the information that we need, is useless. So we wanna make sure that everybody has access and that we have a plan moving forward. But I'm confident that Mr. Soto is gonna make that happen.
Yeah, and I, I just, I wanna, like, I don't want people to walk away from this thinking that one person was running the whole thing, because it was a combination of a team of three, plus all of our family engagement team, you know, for some of it, plus main office staff for some of it, plus counselors for some of it. So the system is used for so many different things that, you know, the expert in, you know, not everybody gets trained on how to schedule in Power School. You know, there's probably one person in the building that is gonna be doing that. So those people received training, like, our family engagement received training on like, how to enter attendance. Um, some of our counselors received support in how to enter referrals and things li- things like that. So each piece is different, but we do have, uh, we do have a building, you know, a stipended building tech lead at every single school. And, you know, the, the data team has used those people to be subject matter experts and, you know, on the ground for, you know, things that, you know, not things like, you know, my, my screen went blue and I need a new computer, right? That person, but, you know, things that can be, um, you know, supported at the building level. The tech leads are usually, usually the ones that, um, that do that. So we use them in that way, but, you know, there, there is, you know, I, I will be going back to the team and figuring out, you know, what, what training we did provide and what's still outstanding. And I wanna learn more about Mrs. Vega's, um, at, you know, at, trouble accessing it, and, you know, whether or not that's, you know, school-wide, or is that an isolated incident or what? So, um, thank you for all the feedback on that.
Ms. LaFevre.
What about our other student rep? How you doing?
Hello.
How's it going? Are you able to get onto that app and?
No, I didn't really, uh, know what this was. I, I didn't get told of it.
Exactly the point.
I never logged in.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
There's your response.
It's not isolated to one school, at least.
Ms. Vega, go ahead.
And if I can offer some more insight, um, I know I was made aware of this before school started, that the things were changing, because I went to go log into my School Brains to see my schedule, and I had realized that it was still from the tenth grade, so was confused. I had emailed my principal, and she told me that we were changing. And when I tried to log in through the school Chromebook, it, it told me that it was blocked, that it was, I would like, it felt like it was a website that wasn't allowed to be used. And then I tried it on my phone, and it also said that I'm not allowed to use it under this username. So it, it seems like it's an issue of like security, like, if it, you're not allowed to because of something set in place.
Mr. Sheen.
So I'm just curious, how is this impacting, like, calls about attendance and stuff for students? Because it seems like if, I mean, do parents have access, and have parents been trained on how to access all this, so they can?
The next phase of the project was to impre- implement that parent portal app. Um, we, we haven't implemented that yet. Like, that's gonna be work that's happening in September and October.
Okay.
Um.
Are we planning about like, open house that parents will have? Is that like, a goal?
Yeah, we'll, we're gonna do something for, to make sure that parents are aware how to use the app and what, what do you use it for, so, you know. Um, our open house is, you know, the, the open houses that are scheduled this month. Like I said, we haven't rolled out that app. That's, we've, we've always intended of including that app, um, as part of the pro- the work, the work was gonna be happening in September, October. So, once that done, we'll, we'll roll out, you know, what the, um, you know, how to use that app and, and what do you use it for.
So just in terms of ta- attendance and our attendance goals, so, like, obviously, I'm sure Power School is the driver that makes the phone call, right? I mean, it's not just someone calling, like, we have a system for that. So, Power School ma- is that happening?
Yeah, Thrill Share now, eh, eh, you know, we were up to the wire, like, getting that to function before the first day of school. But Thrill Share is the application that calls and emails and sends texts, and that is linked right now to Power School.
Okay, and it's not communicating to people, like, to check Power School, is it?
No, usually they get a, they get a text, an email, and a phone call. Or, not a phone call, but, um, you know, for, once we get to where family engagement coordinators are focused on a cohort of chronically absent students, there'll be follow-up calls.
And like I said, I really hate to harp on this, but I just have to say again, we have trained our students so well to be checking their grades and to be judicious with checking that and seeing like, okay, I took a test and the grade got posted, and I can see what my grade's gonna be in the first quarter, second qu- like, we just can't lose that, and we can't lose that because they don't have access. So it's just like, we, a- and it's just such the world we're in. Like, you can access your college grades, you can access your work schedule, you could, like, they just need to be able to access their grades, and probably, I'm assuming parent or teachers can put in there if a student's absent, they can put if there's missed work, maybe. I, I'm assuming that they, students can see like, okay, I'm missing these two assignments, let me engage with my teacher on this. And so we're, we're just creating more barriers for our, automatic barriers for our students, because I'm sure the app would give a, you could get an alert saying, Devin Sheen is missing his ELA assignment, and it would tell me when to get it in, or you're approaching a deadline or whatever. Like, we just, i- in such, in instant world that we've trained people and where everything is on their phone, we just, we can't lose that, because it's gonna be so hard to, to rewire that, to, to wanna get those alerts and to that instantaneous nature of it.
Ms. LaFevre.
I'm sorry, so really quickly, so you sent out an email back on July tenth. Um, that Power School was officially live. Now, it was supposed to also send out the invitations for asynchronous trainings and live trainings. People receive those? I mean,
Yeah, there, there was, yeah, there was some trainings that already happened, but there was specific training that we wanted to provide. We, we wanted to drop in during PD and, and be there to support, um, during PD week. Those, we had to pivot a little bit because we just needed the team to focus on things working day one. Making sure that, you know, Thrill Share is connected so that we can call families um, and, and do all calls, and making sure that the schedules were done, making sure that when students needed to access some of their applications through Clever, that that was synced and everything was all set. So we had to pivot a little bit, but our focus is gonna shift towards providing better support and training. So, I heard that loud and clear from everybody. We definitely gotta, um, you know, uh, divert some of our attention to those efforts.
And I would ask that this, in one month from now, an update on where we're at.
Yeah. Happy to provide that. Um, I think that, that captures the, you know, we spent a lot of time on Power School. That has been the biggest pain point to a successful launch of the start of the school year. As you all are aware, we had a microburst pass through Holyoke over the weekend, and, you know, uh, we had our facilities team go to every single school just to make sure that um, the facilities were, were in good standing. We had a, a little bit of flooding in the basement at Metcalf, and we had a, a downed tree at Ian White that was subsequently cleaned up, and then we ran into issues um, today at Holyoke High School that, you know, that, that the custodian never really reported to us, and it, it had to do with internet and phone. It was a power issue, so one of the switches ended up getting fried and, um, things are up and running. The last update that I got was like, that we still had to finish half of the phones, but internet was back up, and we, we were able to fix that. So shout out to um, everybody that came in on the weekend to make sure the buildings were ready for Monday. Um, and like I said, uh, next week, our cab, our, our team is gonna sit down and just document like, some lessons learned. A lot of it, a lot of the lessons learned are gonna be around our student information system and scheduling and never doing an implementation like this again, like, right before the start of the school year. Um, and then on the instruction level, I just wanted, uh, Jackie to provide, you know, uh, a fo- you know, what is our focus for the month, uh, with the principal playbook?
Um, the first thirty days are, are completely focused on setting up your rituals and routines and building relationships. And in my work with school leaders and helping them to prioritize their work, we break out the year in, in what I call the arc of the year. What are we doing and focusing on in quarter one? What are we focusing on in quarter two? What are we focusing on in quarter three? In quarter one, um, it's all about systems and structures. So there's a playbook for principals every week. It's paper. They collect data with their team, and it's like, hmm, this week, we're gonna look at, uh, the lunchroom. How's the food coming out of the cafeteria? How are the kids? Is the, are the routines clear? Is it staffed enough? Next week, arrival might be on their list. How's it going at arrival? Are cars coming in? What about walkers? What about buses? What, how is that system running? Also, it's about looking at classrooms and supporting teachers who may need some support around giving clear directions, ensuring there's routines for passing out papers, getting papers. How do you sharpen your pencil? How do I let you know that I need to go to the bathroom? There are many educators that still need support on that, and so this playbook allows leaders to visit classrooms, identify if there's a need for su- su- support, and then provide that support, whether it's a practice clinic with just a small group of teachers, or maybe it's something that they do on a Wednesday PD. But each week, there are different indicators for leaders and their leader team to look at. They look at the data, and then they plan some professional learning for all or some of their teachers within the next week or so.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson.
So, I, I'm just following up on the aroma in the hallway. Um, there was a, uh, a distinct, um, foul smell the last time we met, and it's still there. And, um, I don't know how much it goes through the school, but it would definitely be an impairment for me if I was an educator or a uh, student here, if that smell was in my classroom. So, um, I would really like to have that, uh, resolved as soon as possible.
I'll have somebody look into it, but there have been no reports of that foul smell anywhere else, but I did, I did smell it as well, so.
All right, moving on. New business, budget transfer and reports. You have a motion that the school committee accept gifts and grants received. Second. Motion moved by Mr. Willingham, seconded by Ms. Wilson. Discussion. We haven't voted yet. Thank you, thank you.
So, just gonna let it.
Ms. Wilson.
My, um, computer died, so I do not have access to it. So I think from now on, I'll be gonna be requesting, uh, paper copies.
Sounds good.
Take USB C, I have a charger.
My, my computer is completely, it won't even open. I don't know what's wrong with it. It just died. Thank you. So.
Ms. LaFevre.
Would you, would you like to sit next to me? I don't bite. Ms. Wilson? Can I sit here?
I'd love to, thank you.
I'd like to have a friend.
Ms. Feliciano, are there any questions on Zoom? Any questions on Zoom about this discussion? Ms. Wilson.
I know, I'm gonna hide it. Um, my question is, uh, I would just like better understand these creative. Experiences for the five thousand dollars for one, two, three, four, four schools.
Mr. Soto.
Yeah, that's for, uh, Morgan, Ian White, Lawrence and McMahon, and they each collaborated with the Hitchcock Center for Environment. To provide a year-long outdoor science program. For grades one and two. So that's what that grant is for.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, starting with Ms. LaFave.
Yes. Miss LaFave. Ms. Tensley Williams.
We're gonna stay in order.
Mr. Izaza.
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Dr. Vericalon.
Yes.
And Mr. Sheehan.
I think you might be on mute. Ah!
All right, moving on, warrant approval report. May I have a motion that the school committee vote to accept the report of warrants approvals listed above?
Oops, so moved.
Ms. Wilson, seconded by Mr. Willoughby, discussion. Seeing none, roll call vote, Ms. Feliciano.
Fave, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Izaza. Dr. Willoughby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson. Dr. Vericalon.
Yes. Moving on, updates of committees, policy and governance subcommittee, Ms. Wilson.
We have a meeting on Wednesday, um, at, starting at five thirty. Um, we're going to finish section K and, uh, moving on to the end, section L. Um. Uh, we are going to revisit. Um. I, I, I don't have it in front of me because it's again in my links. Um, we're going to revisit one of our policies that we've already reviewed for chronic absenteeism. Um, that, um, we had, um. A mem- former member of the school committee, um, who is part of the development of that program, um, who believes very strongly who, um. And we're going to review that, um. Once again. So Wednesday, five thirty, down at Suffolk Street.
Thank you. Finance and Operations Subcommittee, Mr. Willoughby.
Thank you. Um, planning on holding a meeting this Thursday, September. Um, eleventh at five thirty at fifty-seven Suffolk Street. I think the topics are going to be a lot of the items that were referred to the committee from our last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Joint City Council School Committee, Mr. Willoughby.
No.
Thank you. Local Control Subcommittee, Ms. LaFave.
Nothing.
Leadership Accountability and Measurement, Mr. Sheehan. The goals, yeah. Thank you. Ongoing business, superintendent search update. There was a request for information from, oh. And we'll have Ms. LaFave excuse herself. From the quick update. And I get, I should also ask Mr. Sheehan. Yeah. Sounds good. For the superintendent search update. Uh, Mr. Mangano helped us sending a request for information from four firms with expertise in superintendent searches of. Firms that have been used for searches in comparable districts around our area. And we requested that. Um. We didn't necessarily have the dollar amounts for the information. So that way the school committee can have more flexibility at looking through the information about what the firms can offer. Before actually requesting the quotes. Because we are required to pick the lowest quote. So, um, Ms. Wilson, you will be receiving the, um. The information from, um, the four firms so that you can discuss with the subcommittee. Nope. Our search for evaluation, yeah. Yep. So you will have information for planning your first meeting, yay.
One might expect that information so I can work.
Gonna send it to you right now.
Oh, good. So I can work on that. Thank you.
Yep.
And, um, can we just, uh, reiterate who else is part of that committee?
That would be. Ms. Izaza and Ms. Luna Martinez.
Wonderful, thank you.
You. Right. And then we have the final draft of the student and family handbook. As well as the summaries changes, we'll call back Ms. LaFave and Mr. Sheehan.
Yeah, this has been a recurring item. Uh, we've incorporated all of the feedback that we have received the last time. Um, we were here, uh, we had, uh, Mr. McAvoy talk about. Some of the language that was in question and there was a decision was made to delete it. So there's no updates outside of of those. So we're hopefully. Looking to get final approval from the school committee on both the, uh. Student and family handbook and the final draft of the employee handbook. Um, with the employee handbook, there's one small section where we just need to accept the. The changes, uh, that the attorney had, but. Once we have those, we can send them to translation and disseminate them, um, as needed.
Thank you. No discussion on this. I think we've discussed this enough. Ms. Wilson, nevermind.
I was just going to say that I think the summary of the changes is, is very helpful to be able to see where those changes were.
Thank you so much. Final draft of employee handbook.
Same thing.
Yep. All right. Referral of policies we have. AC non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation. That's good. Let's take a step back. Now that we have both final drafts of both student family handbook and employee handbook, may I have a motion? For approval of both handbooks. Motion by Mr. Izaza, seconded by Ms. Tensley Williams, discussion.
I would have appreciated if it was on the agenda that we were going to be asked to vote on this this evening.
Duly noted, Ms. Wilson. Any further discussion? All right, roll call vote, please, Ms. Feliciano.
Yes. Um, Ms. Tensley Williams.
See.
Mr. Izaza.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. That was a yes. All right. All this is to refer, so we have AC non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation, ACA non-discrimination on the basis of sex. And ACAB sexual harassment. May I have a motion that the school committee vote to refer above policies to the policy and governance of committee before review? Moved by Ms. LaFave, seconded by Mr. Izaza, discussion, Ms. Wilson.
So I'm just wondering, um, what has, uh, caused, uh, these policies to be sent, uh. To the poli- sent to the policies for review? If there was any particular action that was done that the policy committee should be aware of. Subcommittee, excuse me.
Ms. LaFave.
I thought we already did that. Um, well, I thought we already did the first reading and then it was supposed to be posted any ri- um, recommendations and it comes back for a second and. Final reading. But our, did something happen? Because we initially sent it back because there were. Um, specific individuals that needed to be named as to who's going to be in charge. Uh, but I thought that was done and it came. Back with those names and it already came to the committee. At some point this year, I just can't remember when. How does that sound?
Ms. Feliciano, do you have any information for clarification on this?
For the AC non-discrimination and everything else?
It would be that those three, because those were the ones that needed a name.
They were. They were read in back in, um, three, six, twenty-five, right? And then. They didn't come back for a second reading after the mistakes. Uh, it was an email to bring it back on eight eleven. Turn back to the full committee to refer it back because it had updated language. It got reverted back to its original.
Ms. LaFave.
I'm a bit confused. Reverted back to the original. I thought the names were already put in there or.
But it never came, it never came back. It hasn't come back since you guys asked for the request. To get the names changed and it has not been in subcommittee either for updates.
Ms. Wilson.
So my understanding. Legal looked at this and they're making recommendations. Is that why it's coming back to the policy subcommittee?
Yes.
Okay, so there's recommendations from legal that will be forwarded to myself as the chair. Of that subcommittee, then I can share that with the group.
That's right.
Wonderful. And so it's not going to be on the, the agenda for, you know, Wednesday.
Yeah.
But it will be coming soon.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Ms. LaFave.
Yeah, and I'm going to tell you why it's very confusing. Let me look at those letters again. It was AC, give me the letters again, it's ACA.
ACA and ACAB.
I have ACA, ACAB. AC I don't have. I was keeping track myself and the amount of times that we were doing second and final readings. We did do second and final readings on April twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-five and the effective date when we said it would be for seven one. So now did something else change? After that, that there is a change to the policy because then we'd have, okay, so she reviews it, it comes back, it's got to be posted again, but if it's the same language. Why are we sending it back?
Mr. Soto. Yeah, this is, this was language that, um, based on the version that was reviewed in subcommittee, the attorney had not. Seen that language and he had some recommended changes. So since then. He had, he has had an opportunity, uh, Matt McAvoy to review all of that. Language and make the necessary changes based on updated, um. You know, based on his legal opinion. So. We were hoping to get this referred back to the subcommittee so that we can have Nikia Smith. And Attorney McAvoy speak to any of the changes that are being recommended to the policies.
Ms. Fave.
And I think that when that happens, maybe if you just give us. Like. So that we know why she, why policy is going to go back to square one. Um. Because all I see in here is just additions of legal references and cross references. I don't see like change. No, but I mean, if that is the recommended change is just the addition of legal and cross references or. Something to attach to that, at least they know what, what it is that's.
Yeah, we were hoping to have the discussion in subcommittee. Um, I sent an email on August nineteenth that, uh. No, that, um, a few of our policies had been reviewed by legal. And, uh, that there were some recommendations to comply with some of the latest Title IX changes. Um, so, and then, you know, I, I just named like, I'm seeking, seeking direction. As to where it goes from here now that the attorney has reviewed it and has recommended changes. Which led to it getting added here to then get referred to the policy subcommittee. If there's a different way, like if this should have just went right to the policy subcommittee. Um, then, um, I'm happy to do that, but you know, I, I was, that, that's how this happened.
Ms. LaFave.
No, I mean, that, that's fine. It's the, it's the right step. It's just, it got us all confused because. There was no reasoning behind it. To me, when I saw it, I'm like. Why are we starting all over again? You know what I mean? Without a backing to it as to really understanding.
Yes.
All right, now that we have clarified. Our questions. Seeing no further discussion, roll call please.
Yes. Mr. Fave. Yes. Ms. Tensley Williams.
See.
Mr. Izaza.
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Um, Dr. Vericalon.
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan.
Yeah, right. Moving on, policy for discussion. ADF, Holy School District Wellness Policies and BBA School Committee Powers and Duties. Ms. Wilson.
So on the first, um, so there was mostly just updates about. Changing children to students, um, for ADF, the district's wellness policies. And so this is, um, what we used. There is one significant change and there was a significant conversation around this. Um, I believe it started, um. When we took information in from Ian White families and, you know, maybe two years ago, it feels like. Um, so one recommendation is. Um, under daily recess, all elementary school students should have. And we're saying at least twenty minutes of supervised recess each day. Administration or staff cannot take away recess as a form of consequence or punishment. So that was the significant change, um, within this policy.
Ms. LaFave.
So it's a recommendation for a first read and refer to the. Interim Superintendent to post for recommendation for comments, recommendations. Okay, that's my motion. Motion to refer to the interim superintendent to post for two weeks for public comment and viewing.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tensley Williams. Discussion, Mr. Willoughby.
I had recess taken away from me many times in grammar school.
That would be hard to believe.
Where were you before me?
Yeah. So I just, so I want to say that there was conversations, um. About, um, kindergartners and first graders actually having two recesses, uh, within their school day. Um. You know, based upon research and study and movement is so necessary. Um, I also want to note that I was informed that one of our schools may have challenges for an uninterrupted twenty-minute recess. If we are linking it to, um, lunchtime due to staffing. Nothing in this policy says it has to be linked, um, to a lunchtime in order to make that twenty minutes. But I, I'm, we aren't. The policy, its spirit is twenty uninterrupted minutes. It is not two ten minutes, four, five minutes. Um, and then of course, there's discretion for educators, um, to take their students out as well. Um, when they feel they need a, a, a significant movement break. But I just wanted to share that.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Ms. Fave.
Yes.
Ms. Tensley Williams.
See.
Mr. Izaza.
Yes.
Dr. Willoughby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Yes. Next up, BBA School Committee Powers and Duties for first reading.
So the only thing. So the only thing is, uh, with personnel matters, um, that the superintendent, uh, you know, appointed by, um, is appointed by the school committee and, uh, they have to perform certain duties that are required by law. Um, and as well as, um, making recommendations for the assistant superintendent. And it goes on a variety of different languages, um, based upon what it is. Uh, school business administrator, special education administrator, school physician, school nurses, and supervisor of attendance. And these positions, uh, do not report directly to school committee. And then there's a note of a cross-reference going in with the school attorney being added.
Mr. Willingham.
Thank you. Yeah, just for the public, these are the only positions that the school, that the school committee has authority over in terms of hiring. You know, the, the teachers and, um, administrators in, in general, don't come to us for, uh, appointment. They come to the superintendent. Um, are we going to get a list of these? Um, employees, are they going to start, start coming here? I know there's some vacancies and recent hires that, that haven't, that haven't come. I'm not sure if they're on contract basis. One year, three years, I'm a little confused.
We will provide you, uh, um, anytime a new person is appointed into any of these positions, we will provide them to you. So, um, uh, Irene actually has all the new nurses that were hired this year. Um, it didn't make the agenda for today, but we'll make sure that it gets on, um, the next agenda. But, um, she already has them and we had put a packet together. Um, but, uh, it will, unless the committee is asking me to provide a list of names for people that were already in these positions, my plan was anytime we're going to hire anybody into these positions, that we, we share that with the school committee and go through that process.
Mr. Willingham.
Yeah, um, again, are some of these one-year appointments or they're based on contract? I know the city of North Hampton is negotiating, they recently negotiated their, their business manager, business manager's new, new contract. I think she had like a three-year contract and that was negotiated by
Yeah.
the school committee. You know, is that going to be similar here? I don't know.
Yeah, so the nursing, the nurses are not on a, you know, one-year contract. They're part of, you know, the, the Nurses Union. Um, and then the, uh, special education, uh, direct, uh, the person who oversees special education, um, is on a three-year contract. I'm not sure what year it's in right now. Uh, the school business administrator is on a three-year contract. Um, everybody knows Sean and I already announced to the full committee that his last day is going to be October seventeenth. So, um, you know, when we're, when, you know, when, when we get a new person in that place, it will have to come to the school committee. Uh, to, you know, to approve.
Yeah.
And that's a three-year contract. So it's standard, um, in those positions, uh, for, to have a three-year contract.
Yeah.
And then there's positions that are not on a contract, the, you know, the, the, it, there's no term limit. So the attendance officer is an example of that. That's not, uh, you know, that's not a contract employee, um, where they go through, you know, three-year contracts and then it gets renewed. It's just, you know, that person has been in the position for a long time. And, um, you know, there's not a, a contract, the, the handbook kind of dictates the, the working conditions.
Well, can I like, request maybe a, like a list?
Sure.
Like a starter list, so everyone, everyone can be on board. List of these positions, some of them are called different names, you know, the business manager, that's sort of an archaic term, you know, no one calls it that anymore. Finance director, you know, was, is, uh, typical, typical names. I'll be, I would just recommend if we can get a list of the positions listed here, who's in them?
Will do.
If they're vacant or not, who's in them, what the tenure is. Is it a contract? If so, what year is, what year are we in with the contract? If it's a year-to-year deal or if it's just when you're hired, you're hired and, you know? Um, so that would be helpful to me and I, I, I think my colleagues, just to get a run in total that. I know, um, you know, this hasn't been the norm in over, over ten years. Okay, so I appreciate that though, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willingham. Ms. Wilson.
So I was going to ask for the same thing. So I think it's absolutely. Thank you, Ms., thank you, Mr. Willingham.
I'm just.
Oh, the motion is going to be to refer to the interim superintendent for posting two weeks for public comment and recommendation.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Wilson. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. LaFave?
Yes. C.
Isaza?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Dr. Vera Cologne?
Yes.
And Mr. Sheen.
Moving on to final reading, may I have a motion that the school committee vote to approve as final reading and to adopt the policies to be effective as September eighth, twenty twenty-fifth?
Summer.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tensley Williams. Oh, Mr. Isaza, never mind. Got it. Discussion. Mr. Willingham.
Where are we exactly here on the, um?
Final reading policies, BDT, BDE, and BDF. Just before announcements.
I just want to comment just on the proposed update for BDE. Just the, um, to the vice chair to the chair. We've talked about that before at length. The members, um, uh, members of the subcommittee, so we're changing that from four members to three, correct? Okay, so I'm just in favor of that. If you have four members for a subcommittee, you need three for a quorum. So it's a little harder to meet that charge. If there's vacations coming up, if there's illness, if COVID comes back for any reason, this is harder to get, um, three members. So I'm, I'm in favor of the, of the, the, the three-member committees, it's easier to get two members. Okay, that, that's my experience. I know even the city council has a couple subcommittees that, that only have three, only have three members and they have thirteen members. We only really have, have nine. Nine members, so I'm in favor for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
So this is the second reading for all of these three. We've already, uh, reviewed them once, um, made, uh, recommendations to language changes. Um, these have been posted for the public to comment on our recommendations that we've already made. So I'm going to ask Ms. Feliciano, were there any public comments on these policies? Okay, so there is no recommended changes from the public for these policies and we've already had a first pass to make recommendations.
Ms. LaFave.
So I'll do a motion, second reading? That's what you're saying? No.
Final, right?
Oh, okay, final, okay. You just confused me with what you just said. Okay.
No, yeah.
All right, so that the school committee vote
Didn't we have?
To approve, that's what I, did we? Oh, that, we did, I'm sorry.
If there's no further discussion.
Only me, I only, I only discuss.
Ms. Wilson.
So I just want to comment that the, um, BDF was the, um, advisory committees, um, that each school has to have and it's by law. So I am saying that with this approval, we, we will need to establish these for each of our schools.
Seeing no further discussion, roll call, please.
Ms. LaFave?
Yes.
Ms. Tensley Williams?
C.
Mr. Isaza?
Yes.
Mr. Willingham?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Um, Dr. Vera Cologne?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen.
Excellent. Down to announcements. Just a few extras that I want to put in there. Look out for some emails from Ms. Feliciano inviting us to different things. The Springfield Puerto Rican Day Parade is coming up September four, fourteen. And we also have the Big E Holyoke Salute Day that's coming up and the sixteenth, and then we will have to sign waivers if you want to, you know, hop on in the trolley and be celebrated. And that's along with all the open houses that we also have here listed. Ms. Tensley Williams.
Today I had a chance to meet with, um, Mr. Rule Red Ray at Sullivan School. I had a wonderful visit. Um, they were on the recess. And he made an appointment for me to come back and meet with the art teachers, this three art teachers. And I had some things that I showed him and he wants me to get involved with the project, so I will be doing that.
Thank you, Ms. Tensley Williams.
Welcome, sweetheart.
May I have a motion to adjourn? That was Ms. Wilson.
I wasn't on microphone, but I made the motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Tensley Williams, roll call, please, Ms. Feliciano.
Ms. LaFave?
Yes.
Ms. Tensley Williams?
C.
Mr. Isaza? Mr. Willingham?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Dr. Vera Cologne?
Yes.
And Mr. Sheen.
Meeting adjourned at seven forty-two. Thank you, everybody.